So we're gonna go ahead and call our regular meeting for September 8th, 2022 to order. Before turning things over to Commissioner Johnson for his dedication, I wanted to say that something that I'm pretty sure everyone is already aware of, this has been a very difficult week for the town of Youngsville. Between losing the Griffins Building, as well as Brandy's Botanicals and Jubilation Spa on Monday, it was difficult to watch, but we're extremely grateful that there were no injuries because it certainly could have been way, way worse. One thing I am proud of is there's been a tremendous showing from the Youngsville community offering support to these business owners in their time of need. I have no doubt with that support, some hard work and dedication, it will be rebuilt. It'll be a beacon of pride. With you this unfolded here at Town Hall yesterday, we offer condolences to the affected family members. I want to thank our staff at Town Hall for your professionalism in a very difficult situation, as well as our police officers who stepped up and had a situation in hand within about 30 seconds. Their action quickly de-escalated a very, very tense ordeal. Again, this has been a tough week. Tough times don't last, tough people do. So with that, Commissioner Johnson, if you'd leave some prayer.
Let's pray. Holy Father, please be with us as we go about the town's business tonight. Please be with our community as we've seen some strife over the last week. Please be with our country as we see changes unfolding on a daily basis. Please be with those who are lost and those who are sick and those who need your guidance. As these things, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Before we get started, full-fledged, we got a little change to the agenda. We've got a special guest with us tonight, and I'll just kind of turn the floor over to Representative Matthew Winslow.
Thank you very much.
You may want to see this.
I'll go ahead and beat whoever's on. My grandmother said that everything comes in threes. So I think we've met our threes for the week. So let's look forward to all the good things. She says good things come in threes also. So that's what I'm looking forward to. Thank you, Tom, tonight. Thanks for letting me come up for you. I spoke to the mayor. I said, hey, I'd like to come up for the board. The timing is deserved tonight. It's timely. So I just want to kind of go through what's gone the past week with the Griffins Building. For the board and for the people here, I'm the owner of Griffins property and then Brandy's Botanicals building, Jubilation, Archer Pratt, and also Winslow Homes. Kind of bottoming in reverse order. So we purchased Winslow Homes. We bought the buildings adjacent to it. And then eventually, about a year and a half ago, we bought the Griffins Building. And so if those of you that are here before they know what the building looked like. And so my goal was to start on one end and then as they became available, I purchased them, same name of the Griffins Building, was to revitalize downtown. Very excited about it. I love doing it. It's not permanent what we do. I mean, and also, you spend more money making a beautiful and part of the community than doing anything to ever get out of it. But I just really, it's something I do as a hobby, something I enjoy. I like investing in the town. Unfortunately, almost time's kind of running together. About two weeks ago, we had a pop-up storm come through town. And what it did, it made the front of the front east, south, north, east part of the building dip in. And what it did is the first four rafters, they fell in. And what had happened was where it's been patched all the years, it had just rotted away. And that's what made it volatile. That afternoon, I was in there walking around with my trade partner, and we were preparing how to fix it, repair it, replace that section, put it back in, drive the building in. And we lose standing where the wall fell and everything else. So it's kind of, it gives you some feedback. But I am very thankful to God that it happened when it did. You couldn't have picked a better time or anything else because Brandy's was closed, Jubilation was closed, Archer Pratt was closed, our business ultimately downtown was basically empty because there was no traffic because of Labor Day. I mean, there was just across the board. I'm thankful that, you know, it's just sticks and bricks. We can compare sticks and bricks. I hated it was that I kind of grew up in the building because we had big plans. I have been, I had never intended to run a restaurant. I didn't buy it to run a restaurant. That's not what I do. But we're looking for the right person to go in there and start a business, do a restaurant. In fact, I think I made it very clear to all the board members that I was looking for a nighttime restaurant, somebody that would come in and drive traffic into downtown and at night, because this is how the downtown survives, how they grow. They come downtown, they see Brandy's, they see Jubilation, they see Archer and Pratt, and they may not be open at the time, but they want to come back later on because they've seen them because they're there. They support Scoops on Main because they leave out, they want to get ice cream, they want to go to Yacht Club because they want to hang out with their spouse or friends, whatever else. And so this is my dream, it's what I want. And after a year and a half, we found somebody. And thankfully, right, I mean, although this is unfortunate, thankfully, they were supposed to close on last week, but they had SPD alone, and it got delayed. And so it was a young couple, and they wanted to come in here, and they had great plans for whether they're going to do this building. And they had already been reaching out to the community on being a part of it and all that kind of stuff. And if they had bought it and they were working in there, it had been a catastrophe. So, you know, as awful as it is, you know, I can't think of anything better than the fact that, you know, they weren't hurt, they weren't, no one was hurt or anything else in the whole process. I've had, you know, can we all agree that social media is a devil? I don't see anybody saying, you know, it is a devil. I have stayed off of social media. But lots of people have reached out, and I can't believe, I'm here, I think now that is that the community support is almost overwhelmed, it really has been. One of the things I do want to mention though is there was environmental concerns with the buildings was the question, and there are none. When we bought the building, the first thing we did was replace all the old windows to dry it in, because remove all the tint and all that kind of stuff, replace all the windows, make sure the building was dried in. And another thing we did is we had the lead and asbestos removed from the building. That was one of the very first things we did. We hired a contractor to come do it and certify it. And so a lot of people were concerned about when the building came down and cleaned up that we had to worry about those things. But we don't because we had it debated. But because of the dust and everything else, like while we were working on it, thankful to the town fire department because they actually were spraying the building down to keep the dust down. So next steps are going to be the removal of the rest of the building. It's not sound the way it is now, but right now, we're going through all investigations with our insurance company. They sent the owners after, that's what they call insurance. They've already been on site, and they're working very, very quickly. Next, they've been very good to work with. I told them that my primary response is I want to get cleaned up. I want to get an ice sore for one thing, and I'll get a safety hazard. And speaking of that, in the middle of all this, I was trying to pull some bricks and stuff out. And I saved some for the town capitol members with the old mule on it so that you can keep it for keepsake. Okay?
Thank you.
The other bricks and stuff, people have been going to dug in. I ask that people stay away because again, it's still not a safe structure. But what we are going to do is that when we go back to the cleanup process, I'm going to pull the good bricks that aren't broken to pieces and stack them off off the side. So if you have a community, community that want to come and get a brick, I'm going to have them on the side away from the work. And that way, if anybody wants it, they can have it. Okay? So I know it's a gem. The building was built in like the 19, all those original creative buildings of that age were built around 1910 and 1915, plus or minus. So, you know, Saturday's 100th anniversary and everything else. I mean, so it's sad. But I want everybody that wants to part of the building to be able to get it. And so I'll make a big stack off to the side closer sharing to people that want to see it. Community support, again, I can't say anymore. I've had electrician that's, we don't even work with, a painter, a demo crew, a cleanup crew, calling and saying, whatever you get ready to do, we're going to do it for free. We just want to chip in. And I'm like, well, I asked you that, but I appreciate you doing it. I mean, just the part of it. On the day of, I thank my team, in the middle of all of it, Brandy's Botanical, Jubilation, you know, we can still access most of the stuff for Brandy's in the back and all of the stuff for Jubilation. And my team showed up in a moment's notice and brought a truck and trailer and helped move all their stuff out of there so they could take it to their house. And so we filled all of Brandy's garage with everything, including the branded cooler that you bought and put it in the garage. Jubilation, we saved everything of theirs, and they were able to take it off. So, you know, that's because my team jumped in and helped out. Miriam and Mike with Archer and Pratt jumped in the middle of the two. They were moving stuff and directing and helping out. Earl with Scoops on Main, he just shows up, and I was like, who are you? And he goes, I work, I own Scoops, need some help. And he was in the middle of a helping, didn't even ask questions. So, you know, those are the kind of people that we need in our community and something I really appreciate. I do want to ask, there is a post out there for helping Jubilation and Brandy's Botanical. I also want to mention, let's help out Archer and Pratt too. Although they didn't have a total loss, they're willing to shut down until we can get our cycle thing done.
Sure.
And plus, the way it looks now, it's not a green light for business, so it's not attractive for people to show up, especially all the companies and everything. So we will support them and help them out. And there it is, at Benchmark Bank, there is an account that was opened up by the downtown merchants to donate to their businesses. Winslow Homes, we donated $20,000 to start the donations. And I think we're trying to get a raise of $65,000 to help their businesses. We are rebuilding. I don't know what it's going to look like. I think I have time to think about it. Right now, we're just, you know, in the treehawk mode. But we do want to rebuild. And wherever it is, it's going to show honor and respect to what was there before, and it'd be something to tell you probably. So.
No question. There was never a question in my mind that that was going to happen. So I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah. I wanted to hear, appear before the board tonight because, you know, it's still my responsibility, you know, it's my property, and I feel bad for what happened, you know, but it could have been much worse. And I just, I like being a part of the town. I feel like I share with you guys enough. So.
We appreciate that, Representative Winslow. And I think, I mean, you said it, the work that you did at the old Boondocks Building, the stuff that you did at Woodland Supply, I think there was a lot of people that were excited and looking forward to what Griffins was going to look like. And unfortunately, we didn't get that chance. But, you know, one door closes, another opens. Again, I'm excited about what the potential brings and would look like with a new one. With the, with the bricks that are there, though, how much of that stuff can be recycled? Or are you looking at trying to get rid of all of them? Because I just had an idea about the bricks that might be pretty good. So.
What, as it comes down, what, because remember, those are the very, the old-style bricks are very solid.
Right.
So as we take it down, you know, I don't know what the ratio is, but there will be some bricks that we can save and some that could just crumble.
Sure.
Some of the, some of the outside bricks, you can reach up and just kind of peel them apart. The inside bricks that have been weathered, the ones that are stronger ones.
Okay.
The ones on the internal walls. And so I'd be happy to talk to you about it. We've had, one of these companies have reached out, was talking about doing, you know, be able to take some of those bricks and use them. One guy, he's part of an old house, and he wanted to use the bricks inside of his old house because it matches the time period, those kind of things. So I would be doing some of that, but I'll be interested in any ideas you have.
I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions for the rest of the board? All right. Thank you very much. I think we'll speak tonight because there's a lot of people here, so I'll let you guys get to your business. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right. Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
And any opposed? All right. Agenda is approved. Next up is our public hearings for tonight. I'll go through a quick briefing on the public hearings, just so everyone is kind of on the same page with this. We've got two scheduled for tonight. One really isn't going to be actionable because everything has already been pulled. I feel pretty safe and secure that it was already going to be denied because of the request to make it industrial, would not have fit in the area. I will still leave that up if people wanted to speak to that for whatever reason, but I just wanted to kind of level set and make sure everyone was on the same page with that. For the public hearing, when your name is called, I would prefer for you to come up, state your name and address, right, for our minutes. I will call the speakers in the order which they registered. And each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. I think we do have one slight difference in that, and I will get to that whenever I call that name. But generally speaking, when someone comes in and they're representing an entire community or entire neighborhood, we will allow them to have additional time to speak. So I just wanted to, again, level set and make sure everyone was on the same page with that. All comments should be addressed to the board as a whole. Discussions between speaker and a member of the audience will not be allowed. So if for whatever reason, if you got angst with someone in the audience, you turn around to speak to them, we're going to shut it down, and we're going to ask you to have a seat or either leave. Okay? We ask that speakers are civil and courteous in their language and presentation. Defamatory, obscene, profane, and threatening language will not be tolerated. Rowdy, disruptive, or threatening behavior by members of the audience during or in response to a speaker's comments during the public comment period will not be permitted. We're going to be respectful of your time. Okay? I promise you. As a means to give each speaker our individual, you know, sorry, I'm stammering over myself, but basically, we're trying to give the speakers undivided attention. Okay? So if there's side conversations, it's pulling away from us concentrating on what they're saying. So we just ask that there's no side conversations whatsoever. If you feel like you need to have a side conversation, we just ask for you to stand up, step outside the door, say what you need to, then you can come back in. Other than that, that's pretty much it. And I will go ahead and open up for item A, the request to rezone property on Fleming Road, pin number 1853-349D18, from ag to industrial. I'll open that hearing to the public as of 7:16 and turn it over for staff report. I don't know that there's really anything in addition that we need to say other than the request was pulled.
Yeah.
But if you had anything else you wanted to add?
The request was withdrawn. So both planning staff and the planning board recommended that the application for the rezoning be denied. Instead, the planning board recommended that the future land use map be amended from employment and manufacturing to residential for the subject property, which would better align with the existing uses in the area.
Okay. All right. So having heard that, we did have some people that signed up for both public hearings. Did anyone still want to speak to this one in particular? If so, I'll call you by name. I believe the first one here was Sheila Jones.
On on A, I would like to speak on B.
Okay. All right. We had you down for both. I just wanted to give the option. Okay? All right. The next one that we had for both was Sally Hugel.
Nope, I'm good with this one as well. Thank you.
Hey Sally, are you with us?
Yes. Could you hear me?
No, I couldn't. We may have had you on mute. I was going to say, were you able to hear the description really quickly? Did you still want to speak to this one? Or did you want to hold your comments to the next one?
I'll hold my comments to the next one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. And then finally, for both was going to be Margaret Watkins.
My name is Margaret Watkins. I actually do not live here here until, but I'm here just to provide some outside perspective. The land use type, when that is amended, all the citizens take that is that what they approve doesn't matter.
Give me one second. So what we're discussing right now is the first public hearing, the request to rezone. Is that, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you may be doing the second one. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
When you amend the land use thing, that's also citizens how maybe their voices matter because they agreed to that land use plan. Now, there are mistakes and there are things that can be amended and not, but in general, that just tells the citizens that it doesn't matter. And generally, it's not very well accepted by the planning staff either. So I just wanted to make that comment. I would also recommend that you guys have sort of education program for citizens to make them aware of how these plans work together to affect them.
Understood. Thank you. Yes, I apologize. Did you want me to run a three-minute timer on the comments? That'd be fine. Yeah. I didn't think we were going to, I didn't think we were going to have any on this one anyway. Obviously, for the next one, we definitely want to hold to the three minutes. So, okay, and I've got, with the people that kind of showed up late and signed up in person, was there anyone that signed this list that wanted to speak to item A? I'll get it for them.
Thank you very much. My name is Tom Parrish, and I actually signed up for both of them. I'm lucky enough, not in the town, but I'm in the ETJ, and I'm lucky enough to be south side of A, not the west side of B. So literally, I'm kind of caught, almost in between, sort of not quite. River cuts me off from doing that. So I'd like to speak to both of them. I want to thank the board, first of all, ahead in a meeting like this, where we can get up and tell you our concerns. Because I know a lot of times, and I want to thank you for that, a lot of times, your service goes unthanked, but I appreciate it personally.
Thank you.
One thing I want to stress here, with either one of these, I know A is going to be withdrawn, but either A or B, I want to be concerned with the growth in Youngsville. I mean, that's the number one concern here. Thoughtful, controlled growth is great. It's coming from Raleigh, let's face it. It's just coming out of North Raleigh, which is good. It's going to meet us. We need to address it. No question about it. If we have thoughtful, controlled growth, that's what we all want. Uncontrolled growth, as we all know in the human body, is cancerous. We don't want a cancer miracle. We want to make sure we got everything, all our ducks in the road, mainly the infrastructure. That's really all I had to say. Just let's be careful with the growth. And again, I thank y'all for thoughtful consideration, not for yourself, not for your friends and your neighbors, but what is going to help Youngsville long-term in the growth without being a cancerous growth. Do you have a question?
No, I was, I was just going to ask really quickly, were those comments related to both A and B? So just sum it all up. Okay?
I realize you're even going to have A on here. I'm kind of caught in between, like, I'm on the south side of A, I'm on the west side of what you got for B.
Sure thing.
And my concerns are the same for you. I'm just, I love growth, but we have to be careful with it.
Understood. All right. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Appreciate it. And let's see, I thought I saw another hand go up for this man. Remember, if you could give us your name and address?
Yes, sir. My name is Barbara Robinson. I live at 588 Fleming Road in Youngsville. And I know y'all have had a tough week, so I hope I don't make it any tougher on you. I recognize that the application for rezoning this property from agricultural to industrial has been withdrawn, but for the record, I'd like to state the following. The property described in this rezoning application is subject to restrictive covenants that were put in place as a result of settlement of a lawsuit between property owners in Fleming Farms and Farmland Associates. The covenants were newly recorded in the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants in Franklin County, book number 1104, on March 20, 1998, and were indexed to the property in question. The covenants were intended to be binding on the portion of the property, run with the land, and be binding on the heirs, successors, and assigns of descendants and all future owners of the property hereafter described. The covenants declare that if the undeveloped land opposite East Fleming Farm Drive and along State Route 1132, which is Fleming Road, is developed, it will consist of residential housing on lots no less than two acres in size. We realize that restrictive covenants are a private matter, but nonetheless are legally binding on the owner who purchased this property from Farmland Associates. The property owners of Fleming Farms are committed to ensuring that these covenants are followed. We therefore ask that this rezoning application from agricultural to industrial be denied, as you have been, the planning board has recommended, and that any future property owners of the property be made aware that these covenants exist, and that any future development be residential in nature with two acres minimum lots, which also speaks to keeping the growth at a reasonable number of people. And I think you all can see what happened when things don't work out quite as well with the New Wake Charter School, where all of the roads have been just clogged with massive mountain traffic because nobody saw how this was going to play out. So please keep that in mind. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. All right. So did we have any others that wanted to speak to action item A? All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close that public hearing as of 7:25, and we'll move into item B, request to rezone two properties between Fleming Road and Hicks Road, pins 1853-72-2691 and 1853-92-4214, from SFR 2, SFR 3, to TNDO. I will open the hearing to the public and turn it over for our staff report.
For this project, the applicants are proposing to construct approximately 1100 units on the subject property. The net density for this project is only 3.08 dwelling units per acre, while the net density for the adjacent neighborhoods is higher. The concept plan included in the packet meets the requirements of the TNDO district, the traditional neighborhood development overlay as dictated in Youngsville Development Ordinance, Section 8.5-1. The concept plan also provides beginning lengths of the future northern bypass of NC 96, which will help to alleviate traffic concerns downtown. They're also providing several public greenway routes and amenity areas throughout the development, with the total open space equaling approximately 72 acres. The applicants do intend to annex the development into town limits. The property is babbled by SFR 3 and mixed-use zoning on three sides, all of which are compatible with the proposed zoning. TND zoning will also provide a good transition between the single-family to the north and the MU2 zoning to the south and east, as well as between the ag zoning to the west and the MU2 zoning to the east. The rezoning of the subject properties is also consistent with the future land use map and is consistent with the goal of planned for growth from the comprehensive plan, and that will provide a mixed-use community transitioning from very residential uses to commercial along Cedar Creek Road, which supports both the existing zoning and the desired residential growth. It is also consistent with the goals of downtown business retention and attract new businesses, as it will provide future residents within a walkable distance to the downtown core area, as well as provide future commercial space for new businesses along Cedar Creek Road. The planning board voted unanimously with the 25th to recommend approval of the rezoning petition. Our staff is also in support of the request.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners to staff? All right. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the first person on the list up, and that is Sheila Jones, 144 East Fleming Farm Drive.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Jones, and my family lives at 144 East Fleming Farm Drive. We have lived at this address for nearly 30 years, and we reside in Youngsville for nearly a total of 35 years. Why did we choose to live here? For the very reasons stated on the town of Youngsville's west side. In quotes, "Home begins with you." With approximately 2,000 residents, our community is one of small-town character with a desire for excellence and innovation. Another with age is Mayor Fonzie Flowers' message, "Welcome to Youngsville, North Carolina. We have so much to offer in such a quaint setting." Unfortunately, the descriptions of small-town character and quaint setting are in dire need of editing due to an explosion of mega developments being approved to fill in every green bit of open space in all directions at a furious pace. This unrestrained and hazardous growth will double Youngsville's population at 2,000 to 4,000, if not more, and bring a massive influx of new residents and their vehicles at a time when current growing pains are acute and not the future. Tonight, I present to you a petition on behalf of 539 Youngsville residents from 12 surrounding neighborhoods. Tonight, I present to you a petition on behalf of 539 Youngsville residents from 12 surrounding neighborhoods that all ask, "Where's the infrastructure, the roads, water, schools, parks, to support the existing residents, let alone the new arrivals?" These 539 residents don't welcome the negative impacts by DDR land investment requests to rezone and annex 361 acres bounded by Fleming, Hicks, and Cedar Creek Roads. Tonight, as Youngsville Commissioners, you have a serious decision to make on this rezoning and annexation request that impacts thousands of residents in and out of your jurisdiction. Your decision determines if our roads remain stuck in versine gridlock, if homes continue to be flooded by stormwater, and if well and septic systems are compromised, and if Youngsville and its surrounding communities remain livable or not. Please think long and hard about the short and long term in desirable playgrounds that you leave on the town of Youngsville. All 539 residents have signed the petition strongly urging to deny this rezon and annex request on the proposed site, the TNDO. We would also like to rezone the property back to any residential, if it's in the county, or agricultural district, if it's in the town of Youngsville. It's a false dichotomy that if we must have homes, then we must destroy our environment and quality of life. And three, provide for a county park with public input. A large county park, 361 acres, could be the crown jewel that truly marks Youngsville as the gateway of Franklin County. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. So, did Ms. Robinson? She left and came back in. I'm wondering if she was speaking on both when she spoke earlier. That's probably what happened, because I thought she left. Okay, all right. I just wanted to, again, I wanted to give her her time to speak, so. So Ms. Robinson isn't here, so we've got Benjamin Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor Flowers and members of the board.
Good evening.
If I had had the, I'm sorry, 507 Richland Trust, if I had had the opportunity, I would have signed that petition. A new resident here in Youngsville moved in here about three months ago. So I don't have the depth and the history in this town. What I do have is a fresh pair of eyes. Just as my previous person stated, the population of Youngsville currently 2,200, even at a conservative 2.5X, you're looking at 2,750 new people at this new development. The current infrastructure, from what I've seen, is insufficient for what's existing. It hasn't been a good week for Youngsville or Franklin County, as we mentioned earlier. But what I've noticed, traffic is pretty horrible, and it's just going to get exponentially worse if we add these 1,100 new doors. Wake Prep, as Devon mentioned, crippled traffic this week by opening and sent shockwaves up and down Capitol Boulevard and through our town, which is just an example of what happens when a destination is open without the proper infrastructure in place. Obviously, buildings have collapsed. I don't know the background of that. I just start to question, are there enough building inspectors, are there enough code enforcement officers that are going to go out and inspect 1,100 doors that are going to be established here in the town? People are being shot down the street, and cars are showing up here at our police department. I understand that happened in Wake Forest, but again, if we're looking at increasing our size more than two times, that's not going to come with less crime. It's going to be obviously come with more. Regarding the plan, I just had a few comments. The density is too high. I disagree with staff's emphasis on the density. I happen to think that capturing the density as a number of dwellings over the total acreage is purposefully misleading. Essentially, in this plan, it seems to me that they have shoved as many units as they can. The only green I see on the site plan are the stream buffers and the stormwater control ponds, which are required by law. Everything else is filled with 408 townhomes, 177 parcels at .11 acres, 380 parcels at .137 acres, and 123 parcels at .185 acres. Those are tiny, and even in the note number 10 on the site plan, it allows for a maximum increase of 10% more for the lots. So that's even more, that's, you're talking like 1,200. And then my other comment on the site plan was that the street parking for the townhomes, they don't have enough space in the site to even park the cars that are there for townhomes. So I'll end on the fact that SFR 2 or SFR 3 has a minimum lot width of 62 and a minimum lot size of 11,600 square feet. And the 380, the big number, the 380 single-family dwellings, want to be at 6,000 square feet at a 50-foot block width. It's just ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. She unmuted, or she can talk now?
She should be.
Okay, Sally Hugel?
Yeah, hi, everybody. Thank you to the board. I haven't seen you guys in person in a while. So thank you for the opportunity to address the board and the attending members. First of all, I have to also say kudos to Benjamin, Sheila, and Carl. I think you all have really outlined my concerns and the concerns of my neighbors here in Anderson Park. We've been in Anderson Park for 13 years. We're the first residents in. And I think, I think we're all very concerned at the density overlay. And from what I understand in looking at the plans, it appears as though, at least initially, that traffic is going to dump out onto Fleming/North Nassau, which is already becoming more and more hazardous with the amount of traffic that has been coming down that road. And there's no traffic lights there at Nassau and Main Street. You can't get out today. My parents live on the opposite side of Nassau, and if we try to make it across Main Street, it is impossible during the day. I think what we're talking about now is the amount of traffic that is dumping out onto Hicks and Cedar Creek is now going to also happen on the Fleming/North Nassau side, and there's really no, no good option that I've seen or that I've seen in the plans to alleviate the traffic congestion, which is already, and as many of you know, as somebody pointed out, social media. We all know that that's been an issue in downtown Youngsville with the multiple intersections, the amount of traffic and everything else. So I would just also ask the same questions. I think we need to think long and hard about what this is really bringing to the town with this kind of density overlay, and would hope that everybody would take a long, hard look at what we are really looking at what we're doing here in the town of Youngsville. So, and it makes me sad just to say that, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll call on Margaret Watkins again. She gave us one of the A and Bs and left two. Okay, all right. And we'll go to Mary Powell. Is she on the phone? Did somebody, Mary Powell's on the? Is Mary on the?
She should be able to hear us, so she's there.
Oh, okay. Ms. Powell, are you here with us?
Like this.
Yeah, she muted. I wonder, I wonder if she's at Sally's house.
Or she knows that she can unmute herself.
Oh, yeah.
I think she was actually, sorry, this is Sally again. I think she was actually having some technical problems, so.
Oh, okay.
If she's not able to answer, then I think, I think that's okay.
I just, I just figured you put tape over her mouth or something, and I'm totally kidding, I'm totally kidding.
I know.
All right, well, if we can, we'll just skip her for right now, and if we can come back to her, we'll certainly do that, okay? So next up, for the people that signed up in person, we've got Diane Young.
She heard me speak, and she said, "I said it all the first," so she's right.
Okay. Dennis Brown?
I'm Dennis Brown. I live at 141 East Fleming Farm Drive. Good evening. Parcels in question are part of the tar penalty, tributary system. It should not be covered with impervious materials, such as structures of buildings, roads, parking lots, et cetera. The 72 acres that are called a greenway and sediment ponds are not really an altruistic gift from the developer as required by law. What about the rest of the 280 acres? Used to be a forest. Provided a lot of absorption of stormwater runoff. It's no longer there. Many of the surrounding communities are already experiencing flooding, and that was certain to not get better with this proposed development. When I moved to this area 13 years ago, Brandy Creek was about six feet wide, with normal water level just a few inches. Now, with continued upstream development, the creek has widened to about 16 feet with frequent flooding, where the creek rises to the level of the bank, which is about four feet. On June 8th in 2019, flooding caused by heavy rain caused Brandy Creek to rise to about six feet, two feet over the bank, and spread to probably 50 feet, you know, on either side of the creek. And I'd like to talk about other benefits. What are the benefits from this proposed development? If you change the zoning, the TNDO, the developer could basically build anything on the property. The drawings we've seen are only conceptual. There's no guarantee that any of it will be built. How long will it take? At the current rate of approved infrastructure connections, the property could take over 20 years to develop. And how many development companies will have their hand in changing the concept over that period of time? The proposed development is designed for the highest constant profit, with no real benefit to the town. It'll just be an extra burden on the non-existent infrastructure. The lots designated for single-family homes will be about a tenth of an acre, with nearly 10 homes per acre. I can tell you from experience, there's nothing quite like standing on your property line, touching your home and your neighbor's home without stretched arms. And where's the profit? Well, the profit's not going to Franklin County. It's not going to Youngsville. Profit is going to investors in South Carolina. Thank you, that's really what I want to say.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, so next up, we've got Pat Brown. And so for Ms. Brown here, I'm assuming you're the one that was going to represent several neighbors at the same time. So, again, you heard me mention it earlier, instead of having the three minutes, since she's basically mixing all of the ideas of one subdivision or neighborhood or whatever, we'll allow 10 for this.
I believe that's what the standard said, but I also think that it has to be, everyone from the neighborhood has to agree with that individual. So for example, if someone from her household also spoke, I'm not sure how that would play out. It would be up to you to rule whether that would be the same neighborhood or not.
So, okay, so the neighborhood that you're representing, C141 East Fleming Farm Drive, is that, so that's your residence, 141 East Fleming Farm Drive? Okay. Could you say who you're representing, so we'll have a better idea?
I would be representing Fleming Farm, a different phase of Fleming Farm that I live in, because they are in different phases.
Okay.
And all of those people kind of agree online that I would speak, so.
Yeah, we're here to make it easier, not difficult, so. And I think I'm proud of that, yeah, so we'll go. Yes.
I appreciate it. Most of the people that moved to this part of Franklin County moved here for larger lots, peaceful pastoral scenes, and quiet settings. And this includes the people who purchased the mini farms of five to 16 acres along Fleming Road, who bought and invested their money and their lives into Franklin County. This was not inherited land. This was land purchased with hard work, savings, and the American dream of owning a home. All of the people that live here have a stake in this. They made this their home, have a sense of pride in their community. All of the land along Fleming Road was zoned agricultural residential, and not much has changed, except for the zoning. Take a ride down that road, there is still undeveloped land. The Youngsville Development Ordinance describes the agricultural district. Quote, "Farmland is the defining element of Youngsville's traditional identity. A protection of these lands aids in preserving the character of the town." Unquote. Why wouldn't you want to protect that? The ordinance also has the senior corridor overlay district established to protect the pastoral scenes and undeveloped property along the entrance roads and gateways, contribute significantly to Youngsville's community character and a sense of pride. Land values are dependent on proper zoning regulations to ensure consistent and orderly development, aesthetic harmony, and quality of life. Retaining property values is the key to sustaining any municipality or government. Absolum taxes are the main revenue source for local government. County taxes help fund Franklin County School District, whether you live in the actual town limits of Youngsville, in the ETJ, or just a hairline away into the county limits. Let's be clear, we all have a stake in this if we are paying property taxes. The town of Youngsville is dependent upon all the residents of Franklin County who fund Franklin County schools. A comparative market analysis, or a CMA, is a tool used by Realtors to determine the best-selling price for a home. The most important approach to this is the sales comparison approach. One of the most important determinations is choosing a comparable, such as square footage, number of garages, et cetera. But the most important link is the size of the lot. You wouldn't compare a three-acre lot to a lot of .11 acre in size. They're just not comparable. Let's discuss the size of lots in the proposed conceptual rezoning plan. There are 408 townhomes, basically zero lot lines. 123 single-family homes on .18 acres, and the remaining 550 are .11 to .14. These lot sizes are nothing like we've ever seen before in this area, and the side building setbacks are five feet. These homes are basically like brick houses. You certainly could not fit a state home on such a small lot. The Town of Youngsville memorandum dated 8/26/22 shows some net density calculation that may be a bit misleading to the average person, because density calculations have nothing to do with lot size. This density calculation of 3.08 includes all of the streets, all of the lots, streets, sidewalks, parking lots, sedimentation ponds, riparian buffers, the T030 gas line extension easement, and includes the proposed commercial property. Basically, it's just an urban planning calculation, and it has nothing to do with lot size nor the value of the property. Nonetheless, this rezoning will be more likely to dilute existing property values, discourage people that already live here, burden our public school system, stress our already promised existing water and sewer system. This is not reasonable, nor is it in the public interest. In the Town of Youngsville memorandum dated 8/26/22, the staff comments the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with several of the goals of the town plan, comprehensive plan, plan for growth, downtown business retention, and starting business. Sounds awesome, but let's dive a little bit deeper. There's a community profile page in the Town 40 Plan, and it describes the land areas approximately 1.58 square miles. That's like 1,000 acres. We're talking almost 36% of the town we're talking about today. It's certainly some of the U.S. Census Bureau information how Youngsville population has actually decreased as a percentage of Franklin County's population. Then it describes Youngsville's population production, 2020 to 2040, and it uses several different methods. Other statistics I researched confirms similar results, stating that there is a growth rate of approximately 4% per year, which calculates a population of about 4,427. Nonetheless, the town plan states, quote on page 79, quote, "First and foremost, in the effort to invigorate Youngsville is the approach to new housing construction." And here we have the TNDO. Townhomes tend to have a 30% move-out rate after the first year. And if there's a downturn in the economy, townhomes values will decline. Likewise, this rezoning could potentially accommodate an additional 4,400 new residents. This, however, does not include the other recently approved subdivisions on 96, Holden Road, Legacy East, West, Hadley, which is all now under construction. I could guess, well, Hadley is the one that's. I could guess, well, Hadley is the one that's 50% under construction. I could guess in all, these subdivisions collectively could accommodate a total population of about 12,000 people. Hundreds and hundreds of acres have been cleared for timber for profit. Homes for wildlife have been disrupted. Pretty much, there's nothing left. It will take years to fully complete a subdivision based on population projections. Trees are added last prior to a real estate closing as part of a landscape package, so we cannot rely on tree restoration for years. Amenity pools are promised, but usually the last thing to be installed. Infrastructure is non-existent. Main Street in Youngsville has gone the biggest bottom legs for a small town of 2,025 people. As part of the 361-acre development, the town is planning constructing a road parallel to Main Street so they can divide the traffic. However, they are feeding the traffic into existing bottom legs at both ends. Lastly, and more importantly, is the character and nature of the proposed site and its surrounding contiguous properties. There are hundreds of homes to the north and to the west of the proposed site. All of these in particular range in size from one acre as high as 16 acres. The land is rolling, and there are several creeks and tributaries. Youngsville is in the Tarpon and Lethal River Basin and in the Neuse River Basin, the third and the fourth largest in the state. To the east is Richland Creek, and to the west is Brandy Creek and Cedar Creek. These homes are all unwell-inseted, which may be compromised from additional impervious surfaces. Already, on two occasions, untreated wastewater was spilled into our creeks. On November 19, 2019, after receiving a heavy rainfall over the course of 24 hours, 3,600 gallons of untreated wastewater was spilled into a sewer line off of Railroad Street in Youngsville, into Richland Creek. On August 8, 2018, after an electrical malfunction, the pump station on Holden Road in Youngsville spilled 5,000 gallons into the creek. After all, why not learn from past mistakes? Youngsville, quote, "Youngsville, like many small towns, suffered from an oversupply of commercial land during previous decades of eradication and spontaneous development." Unquote. That's in your Town Plan 24. This statement is an admission about what happened in the past, and currently, there still is an overabundance of commercial property. This rezoning is basically the same recipe for failure. Remember, there isn't enough water. Any promised benefit from rezoning to a TNDO is illusory. If I were trying to attract growth and development, I would try to improve the town's overall image as well-planned, attractive, livable, and as a unique community. I would consider something truly big, like a big park in the middle of town, something visitors would never forget. It would serve as conservation land, which in turn would help protect our water supply and provide recreation for biking and running trails, something that people could enjoy for years to come. Please do not approve of this rezoning. It's a recipe for disaster. Rezoning a property to invigorate Youngsville at the detriment of everyone else is unconscionable. Please give some deference to all the citizens who will be impacted. This rezoning will be a detriment to the community, because it will burden our schools, our infrastructure, water supply, and will adversely affect all of us. Please have consideration toward the sensitive nature of land, topography, watershed, and most importantly, property values. I consider approval of this rezoning would not be in the public interest, because it is not reasonable, and it is arbitrary and precious. So please deny this rezoning, and remember that 539 people signed our protest petition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And Stephanie Brown?
Just sitting on behalf of me.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. And Neil Gosh?
Good evening, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Neil Gosh. I am an attorney with the Morning Sir of Law Group in Raleigh, and I'm assisting with the development BRD with this rezoning application. Also with us tonight are a few folks from American Engineering, which is a group that's been working very diligently, and we have Sir Sherlock and Lee Lees. And then we also have Caroline Teague with Raymond Kent Association. I just want to acknowledge that we understand that this is a large project, but I think you all recognize that the entire project will not, in fact, cannot be built at once. Last we checked, a single community is limited to utility allocation for 50 units annually, so this project will take some time to build out. Its size, though, is what helps the development underwrite the many public benefits that the project ultimately will bring to the town. First, it's important to understand that out of 361 total acres, something like 72 acres will be set aside for open space, and included in that open space is about 1.5 miles of a greenway trail to add to the town's parks and rec system. The developer also intends to provide additional acres for a public park, for instance, a public park. That's in addition to private HOA amenities for the proposed communities. And those things all are great, but we also understand that by far, the biggest concern out here is traffic. There was a story in the paper, I think, today, about the backups on US1 caused by Wake Prep. Many of the area residents have mentioned existing traffic issues. We've seen it ourselves. But the developer here has not shied away from that, and I'm happy to tell you that we have come to an agreement with the adjacent property owner, and this project will, in fact, be completing the full length of the collect road from Fleming through this property and out of Cedar Creek. Previously, we were not able to make that commitment, but we recognize the importance of completing that link, have continued those conversations with that property owner, and are now in a position to commit to that link. My final point, the developer here is making a conscious decision to be a part of the Town of Youngsville. We are proposing a community based on the town's long-range plans. Ironically, many folks have suggested the project is too dense for the area, but this project is actually less dense than surrounding communities. Obviously, it's a larger community overall, but it is not dense. Anyway, I would think that a conservative estimate here of just the residential portion of this project is that it's going to bring something in the neighborhood of $300 million in additional tax base to the town, which would more than double the added form tax revenue that the town has. And that's, you know, that's not considering also the infrastructure this project will provide, parks, open space, greenways, trails, and that sort of thing to the Town of Youngsville. And, you know, and that's also before considering commercial property, which is going to bring more business in. That's my time. Thank you for your consideration. Our team is available.
I apologize for the mispronouncing of your name.
That's all right.
Gosh?
Gosh.
All right. Thank you.
No offense.
All right. And finally, Mr. Jim Moss?
Thank you for considering our request. We have a railroad running through our town. We have one commercial crossing, Main Street. There are no plans for an additional commercial crossing. We're going to have a Christmas parade. We have accidents, towing trucks, as there were a couple of weeks ago, when incredibly the buildings collapsed. Chances of that happening on Labor Day morning are not going to happen again. Trains come through here constantly. We are in desperate need of an alternative commercial crossing of the railroad. There is only one path to place that is just south of the Wake Electric Facility. Then where does the road go? This project feels a critical, and there being hesitant to call it a fair, but another rib on the town's street framework. It is incredibly important that we take advantage of this opportunity. No other opportunity that's going to facilitate this. Thank you for considering this. The size on Fleming Farm very quickly. I think I was the last farmer to actually farm Fleming Farm, late 70s and early 80s. I was approached by the owner at that time. The town had zoned part of the property that is under consideration now for multiple homes. He wanted it to be removed from that use so that these folks could have a very nice neighborhood, that they do. We accommodated that. He laid out the subdivision, and the surveyor came back a few months later and said, "We made a mistake, and we overstepped onto you." We granted that land to the developer, adding to their additional property. The last crop I planted at Fleming Farm in the early 80s were pine trees. Most of those trees, to my knowledge, are still growing. These folks are enjoying it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. All right. That's going to wrap up the comments from the public from what I've got here. So we're going to go ahead and close the hearing as of 8 o'clock and move along into citizens' comments. Madam Deputy Clerk, did we have anybody who signed up for citizen's comments? Just regular citizens' comment? I'll ask anyone in attendance. If there's anyone here that would like to make citizens' comment, the floor is open for that.
Fonzie, hi. Mr. Mayor, Sally here. I'm curious regarding the discussion that's going to come up on the railroad crossing bypass situation. Is it appropriate for comments now, or should I wait until we get to that part of the new business agenda?
Once citizens' comments are over, there's no more discussion from the crowd. That's all discussion items for the board. So if you wanted time to speak, if you wanted time to speak to that now, I'll go ahead and grant it since you're already speaking, and then we'll get to those that are in attendance here.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Then the one, and I'm not really clear, actually, I read through the packet, and it was quite lengthy, that 192-page packet. I read through the section on the proposed, you know, S-line overpass situation, and I get it from a perspective of, okay, we need to get an overpass over the railroad. Eventually, there'll be a bypass at some point in time that comes around and links into that. What I wasn't clear on, and hopefully that'll become more apparent later on, or maybe somebody can answer that now. What I wasn't clear on was, A, does what's being proposed mean that there will be a permanent extension of Cross Street beyond Winston to a point at which there will be then an on-ramp or something onto this railroad overpass that would then connect over to the Y there at the intersection there by the electric company and everything? Or is it just a right-of-way to build it? I wasn't clear in the document that was in the packet as to what is actually being proposed. And number two, when I look at that proposal that outlined the bypass and the, again, unclear as to if it's just a temporary right-of-way, or if it's a permanent right-of-way, an extension of Cross Street, it looked like the both bypass proposals that had been outlined, the original and the more current one, looked like they cut right through one of the earlier conversations we were just having, which was a development that is under consideration for the TNDO. So I was just confused how that all worked together and what that request actually was.
Sure. I'll tell you what we'll do for that. Sally, is if we, once we discuss that, and then there's any additional questions, I can certainly direct staff to follow up with you to make sure that there's clarification on that. And probably even maybe provide some maps or something like that, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. Would that work out?
Yeah. No, that would be great. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. And we had someone in attendance that wanted to make a comment.
My name is Cheryl Lee Beak, 48th floor. And I spoke at the previous meeting, town hall meeting, that we had about this rezoning. And I had mentioned then that I feel that the people of Youngsville should really try to follow the class action too, because this is going to be a devastating change in the quality of life. I moved here for the ambiance that I liked in Youngsville. Been here every month, inside at parents'. And I just think that this is going to be devastating. At the previous meeting, a gentleman had spoke about the rights to rezon, which we do have the right, but, you know, as we saw in the recent Roe versus Wade, some laws are made to be broken, not that I could agree with that one, but we're kind of thankful. So I don't think we should be really intimidated by that. And as I said, I've only been here three months, getting to know the town and everything. One thing I have said so seriously, not to drive on Main Street in the evening, because I'm from New York, as I said, you got to get to nowhere real fast. So what I didn't realize is that you can go around to hurt Winston and come up the back way to my property, because it's, that right there is frustrating to me. And I just, you know, really wanted to voice that opinion and then start some kind of proceedings, because I think that this is a travesty to Youngsville.
Thank you, Ms. Leib. Appreciate that. All right. Any other citizens' comments? All right. Seeing and hearing none, I'll move along into the consent agenda. The action requested here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Item number six is old business, which is item A, request to rezone property on Fleming Road, Pen 1853-34, 9018, from ag to industrial. Action requested is to deny request to rezone. I think we're all on the same page with that. Do I hear a motion to deny the request?
Make a motion to deny. Check.
All right. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? That is denied, and we'll move along into the secondary piece of that. The action requested is to approve the future land use map amendment from employment manufacturing to residential for the subject property.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning to TNDO between Hicks and Fleming Road with intersection improvements on both Hicks and Fleming Road.
Is that the wrong or the wrong one? Yeah, we're on the secondary. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Yeah, so this one is to amend the land use map. Yeah.
Keep it straight, Commissioner Brinkley.
I move to approve the future land use map from employment manufacturing to residential for the subject property.
Okay. All right. We got a first. Do I hear a second? All right. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote?
I just want to point out, this was based off feedback from the people in Iowa that they didn't want industrial, and they wanted it residential.
Yeah, because I believe we only had one person that spoke at the previous meeting with concerns and things of that nature. So yes, that's to amend that for that. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. There's no one to discuss, and I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. That motion carries. Item seven, new business, discussion on bypass railroad overpass. Mr. Page, would you like to take that and run with it, or?
I will do my best. A lot of moving pieces to this one.
Yes, sir.
If I can draw your attention to the map.
Hand to the map.
The, we're going to call these a red, a blue, and a green line. Somebody said teal earlier, and I was really confused. So the blue line was the original alignment for the bypass that was on the plans from the 80s. As we know, Cedar Creek and Tarboro is a nightmare yesterday, so putting more traffic into that intersection would make it worse. Therefore, the Youngsville Commissioners and the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization and NCDOT has come together and discussed the green line as a preferred alternative. There are a lot of pieces up in the air with this one, including the fact that it goes across the very parcels that are to be discussed as new business item 7B. That portion of the bypass may or may not be constructed as a portion of this neighborhood. That portion of the bypass may or may not be constructed as a portion of this neighborhood. If it is not constructed, the request here would be to construct the piece that's in red that would attach to Cross Street in the north and then would cross over the railroad tracks there in alignment with Wake Electric and not connect over to Fleming Road. The reason that this is timely is there is a grant from the federal government for a dangerous railroad crossing elimination grant that would allow for grant funds to be allocated for this purpose, to build all of this piece. And the town would have some piece in it. The town, the recommendation from staff is that the town have about $400,000 worth of cash in this project that would only be required if they were to build this as part of the grant. It's my understanding that the NC DOT improvements currently have any construction in our area slated for 2050. And in their last plan, it was 2045, and in the last plan, it was 2040, and the plan before that, it was 2035. So we've always been on the horizon here for whatever it is. They're saying, yeah, it's important, but whatever we're doing in Raleigh and Cary is more important than what happens happening in Youngsville. So this would be one way that we could leverage federal funds to begin the construction of this. There's a second piece on the bottom of the resolution, which empowers staff to negotiate with the property owners for the acquisition of right-of-way. Staff's recommendation at this time is to have a $15,000 option and then a purchase price of $45,000 an acre that would only come about if the grant was funded. If the grant wasn't funded, the town will be out to $15,000. And hopefully, NC DOT would recognize how much we're clawing and trying to get something done for traffic in this area.
Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? All right, action requested here is to adopt resolution supporting the town of Youngsville's economic recovery through the development of the northern bypass, including the railroad overpass proposed for Highway 96, referred to as the Aslan Crossing, for the benefits of vehicle and pedestrian safety, downtown quality of life, economic development, infrastructure improvement.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, we got a first, second, and a third. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item B, request to rezone two properties between Fleming Road and Hicks Road, pens 1853-72-2691 and 1853-92-4214, from SFR 2, SFR 3 to TNDO. I want to make a few comments. And first and foremost, I really do appreciate everyone coming in and being open and honest with views and concerns, right? Because we have to have this kind of feedback. It's just part of the process. We may not always like what we hear, but I promise you, we are absolutely trying to do our best, okay? When you've got a citizenry of 2,200 people and you've got a traffic volume because you've got a major thoroughfare running through your downtown of 20,000 cars a day, traffic can get a little haywire. It's just how it is. If we didn't build it this way, we inherited, okay? So I do want to say a few things, and then I'll kind of open it up to the commissioners if they want to also say a couple of things as well. It's pretty clear to me, right, that previous boards for the town of Youngsville had a very different concept on development. I don't think that's any surprise to anyone here. And based on the information that I have, when approached by developers to grow internally, so building from the inside of the town and growing out, they were shied down. And I can understand what those boards were trying to do. They were trying to keep Youngsville small. I get it. I would love to have Youngsville stay the exact same size and have a blank check to stroke for all the roads we need, for all the overpasses we need, for all the other things that we need. We don't have that, okay? The denials ended up having an adverse effect, and I'm going to get to that really quickly here. What it created was a push for development just outside of the town limits, which has led to thousands of homes approved just outside of our ETJ. County gets the tax revenue, we get the traffic, and no resources to combat it. That's just facts, okay? I'm not trying to cast aspersions, these are facts. For example, and this is a very short list of developments that are within one parcel of our ETJ, which again, taxes go to the county, not to the town of Youngsville. Winston Ridge, 528 homes. Legacy East, 388 homes. Mill Creek, 179 homes. Eagle Stone Ridge, 173 homes. And Hadley of Cedar Creek, which is the LGI community on Cedar Creek Road going to the middle school, not in the town limits. We get nothing from that, it goes to the county, 221 homes. That's roughly about 1,500. I know that math's not perfect, I'm just, I'm estimating, it's roughly about 1,500, okay? 1,500 houses built where the town had zero authority in the decision-making process. We could not approve them, the county did not ask us for input, it was approved and it was built. So again, we get nothing in return except for the traffic that it brings. And God bless them, I'm not trying, again, those people come into town and they shop and do different things. But when we talk about building out infrastructure and the things that we desperately need, when you've got subdivisions like this coming in and we're not getting tax revenue, we can't build all these parks. We can't build all of these additional roads. So again, roughly 1,500 houses where the town had zero authority in the decision-making process, it was all on the county to approve. This is a very small sample size, but there are many others that fall into the same category. For comparison, the current residents within the town limits are around 2,200, as I've already stated. So these neighborhoods, just these five little neighborhoods combined, have more residents than the entire town limits of Youngsville. Growth within town limits positions the town to control what is built, how it looks, and how it benefits the town by having new customers that are small businesses, enjoying our parks and rec programs, and providing resources to build greenways and traffic improvements. The layout presented before us includes about a quarter of the bypass, and this is before some of the talking points were mentioned tonight. So I'm going to kind of skim through this. The layout presented before us includes about a quarter of the bypass, which makes DOT more likely to fund the remainder of the bypass and also positions us more favorably with CAMPO. And for those that don't know what CAMPO is, you have to be at a certain rating to be able to get funding to make developments happen. It's a lot, and I think the average person doesn't understand all of the bells and whistles and hoops and hurdles and all the things that we have to go through to make things happen. It is not an easy task. On the topic of the bypass, town staff, as Mr. Page has alluded to with the recent slides, we've been working closely with state rep Matthew Winslow, as well as local DOT engineer Scott Wheeler. We're doing plans and coming up with ideas on alignments to make the northern bypass a reality in the next five to 10 years. This is something that was originally proposed, and I'm no historian, but the initial version that I'm aware of was proposed in 1991, which tells you in 1991, there was already significant traffic issues in the town of Youngsville to where it needed a bypass. And here we are 30 years later, and guess who it falls on? Us. Now, I'm not shying away from that because I like the challenge, I promise you I do. And I'm committing that if, basically right here, it's 30 years. I was a freshman in high school when this thing was proposed, and I'm old, I promise you I'm old. 30-plus years later, we're the ones actively taking steps to make it a reality. But a huge factor will rest on the approval of this neighborhood and the infrastructure it's going to provide. I want to comment on this as well. As a refresher, infrastructure such as roads, power, cable, water lines, et cetera, they happen as development happens. No fiscally sound entity would ever invest millions of dollars installing something in or on the ground in the hopes that something someday may come along. They would be foolish to do that. You're not going to build a road to nowhere and hope and pray that someone's going to build a house out there. You make it happen as it goes. From a safety perspective, I've talked with our great chief police, Chief Whitley. He has assured me that there is no concern from a public safety standpoint. Our PD is positioned nicely to hire and retain officers, and it's because of his leadership. So as the town grows, he should have no issues with recruiting talent, talented, service-minded individuals to join the squad. The plan presented before us has 70 acres of open space and 60 acres of new greenways and parks, which is something residents have requested in previous public meetings. Also, the density of the proposal is less than the density of Stevens Glen. As an aside, the rezoning was brought forward by the property owner, not the town of Youngsville. When approached with these types of requests, the town has to act in accordance with state law as well as trying to do what's best for the community. We can either embrace it and use its entire advantage, or we can turn a blind eye to it. If we turn a blind eye, development in our ETJ will continue to grow and explode in all directions. It's going to be at exponential rates, and we'll be having these same conversations bearing the brunt of all the blame because that's how it gets levied, where it fall for everything. And again, outside of ETJ, there's no control over it. So I didn't mean to get on the soapbox, but sometimes I feel like it's best if we level set and help people understand some of the things that go into the decision-making process. So I've spoken my piece, any commissioners have?
Yeah, I'll break that down to layman's terms from our esteemed mayor. With us going through this process, we have an opportunity because if this goes to the county, they're going to approve it, and we won't have any say-so on what roads and stuff goes in. So you don't get any, you have no voice then. At least here, we can control a lot of it. That's, you know, that's, it's a tough decision because I know it affects everybody. And we understand that, but we did the YDO for a reason. And the YDO was set for so we could make changes as necessary. And we do get to make those decisions that if it does go, if we can handle it and take care of it, it makes it not the best, that it's tolerable than what it would be if it went somewhere else. That's the layman's term.
And I agree with both Mayor Flowers and Commissioner Johnson. Ever since the day I decided to run for office, I had people coming up to me, what are you going to do about the traffic? The traffic's horrible, we need a bypass. When are we going to get the bypass? And still, every day since then, and it's been three years now. And so my first town hall meeting as a commissioner, I got assigned to CAMPO, which Mayor Flowers, I drew the short straw on that apparently.
So we've all been on CAMPO.
Yeah.
I was on CAMPO, I was on CAMPO 12 years ago, and this thing was 2040, not then, now it's 2050.
Yep.
And we went to all the meetings, I would go to the meetings in Raleigh, sit next to the Raleigh mayor, make sure everybody saw someone from Youngsville was there and involved in trying to get whatever we could get to get attention.
Yeah, and so I took that as my challenge to do what I can to figure out how to solve this problem. And like Mayor Flowers said, we've got 2,200 people in town. They can't afford to pay for a $50 million bypass. So we look for funding other places, look through CAMPO. We went through the Northeast Area Study Update, what, a year and a half, two years ago, where they surveyed citizens, they surveyed the board. We identified the need for a bypass, and we approved that study, and it had it in the mid-range timeframe. They didn't assign a year to it, but it was in there. Well, the MTP comes out for 2050, and it's in the 2050 horizon. So, you know, I agree with everybody that came up and spoke. We need infrastructure, the traffic's horrible. But I believe the first gentleman that spoke, Mr. Perry, said, the growth is coming from Raleigh. We can't stop that. We can stop it from happening inside our town limits, but if we keep doing that, we're just going to get surrounded by and suffocated. And we're going to get no benefit from it. So we had to get creative and figure out new ways to do it. And so some of that is using lap projects to build portions of it, using these infrastructure funds for the rail line to build the top portion. And then now we've got this that is in front of us. So when I think about all those people that says, you know, we need the bypass, when are we going to get it? I'm looking at it right now in front of us, and this is our opportunity to get it. And if we don't take advantage of this now, it's just going to get worse. We're going to get those 1,100 people, 1,100 homes just outside of town limits, just like all those that don't see the creek, and we're going to have to deal with the traffic anyway. We're not going to get a bypass from that, and we're not going to get any revenue from that. And everybody's going to still point their finger at us and say, you fixed the problem, you fixed the problem. And so I think this is the right thing for the town. I'm excited about some of the opportunities it proposes. If Commissioner Redd and I have our way, we'll have sidewalks throughout the town, and I'll be able to walk from my neighborhood on the west side of town all the way to this neighborhood and enjoy the parks and the greenways that they have. So that's what I envision, and I think this will be a big portion of reaching those goals.
Any other comments from the commissioners? All right, hearing none. We do have action requested here to approve, I believe.
Commissioner Percy, you were.
I had zoomed down to the railroad, and then when I tried to zoom back up, it was the wrong.
Acting class, you missed your spot, bud.
You go ahead.
Yeah, so, so yeah, and listen, guys, you know, I think I do thank you all for being a part of the process because, again, it does take this back and forth, and it takes this interaction for us to understand what we need to do, what we can improve on. There's a lot of stuff, because Representative Winslow said it best. Social media is not the spot. If you have a question, comment, or concern, it's easier to get a hold of Mr. Page or myself or any of the commissioners via email. We've got telephone numbers, you could call us and bring up questions or concerns without going through the social media thing. Anyway, I won't get on that bandwagon because we could talk about this all night, and I'm sure y'all are already tired of seeing me. But again, the action requested here is to approve if I hear no other questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I got this one. I move to approve the rezoning request to TNDO between Hicks and Fleming with the intersection improvements on both Hicks and Fleming.
All right, we got a first, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, and any discussion before we move to vote?
Yeah, I just want to say, if the bypass was not included in this, then I would feel differently.
I would agree with that.
The bypass is a huge thing, and it's what we need.
Having infrastructure.
Yep. I do have one question for Neil. You said that you have committed to building the.
This map is, it's on here, you can see the property outline in red. You can see a gaseesman, that kind of, that's roughly where the road goes. And you can see there's a little section, like 500 feet, basically, yeah, right there, that's not in the red area. So we are committing to that. We're going to complete the road, therefore, from Fleming to Cedar Creek, all the way through this property and through the next property.
What kind of timeframe are you talking about for that? Because I know you only get 50 houses for the water allotment a year, so that it'll take a while to build out all the homes. But what about the infrastructure?
It's hard for me to say exactly, it's obviously going to be built on phases. One of the things that's going to play into that is, so the way this site sets up, there's such a stream that cuts property down the middle, right, but north-south. So we don't have two points of access going out to the east, and we don't have two points going out to the west. So we have to build this road in order to get two points of access. We need two points of access to get 100 homes on either side of the stream. So I would say that that road might be built out in two phases, essentially, and then, or I mean, maybe four phases. 50 homes on one side, then another 50 on that side, we would need that road on that side, same thing on the other side. Once we get 100 homes on either side of the stream, we got to build that road for fire safety. I don't know how long it'll take, but that, I mean, it's going to be something like that.
Okay, thank you. Just as the board's attorney, I'd like to ask, is it part of your commitment to have that bypass built by the time that the county issues the 200th certificate of occupancy for those homes?
So I don't know if we can necessarily quiz that, I don't know if the first 200 homes are going to be 100 on this side, 100 on that side. So there could be 200 homes built on one side of the stream first.
Would it be possible for there to be a commitment to? Would it be possible for there to be a commitment to, say, like, the 205th year, the 300th certificate of occupancy? I feel like we can work with phasing.
It's got to do with the phasing and how it comes together. And of course, your water allocation is 50% less, because that can stretch things out quite a bit. I'm Jay Galise, older than engineering, usually after this site. So when we get into the phase and we get into doing, we'll make a 100% commitment to get with the town to get it as quick as we can. So I can do that, but we probably going to need to phase it in a couple phases to get it to that point that we can get there. But if we work that through, will we come up with a phasing plan, a construction plan? We'll all have that attached to it. My recommendation is try to get as quick as we can. But we got to work on the balance of how it's going to get there. We will work to have that happen.
All right.
So my advice to the board is just that, under the new statutes, 160D, these commitments cannot be binding for the rezoning unless they're in writing and signed by the developer. So my recommendation would be that if your vote is dependent on these conditions being binding, that perhaps you amend the resolution to make the rezoning effective once the town receives written commitment to the development that we've discussed tonight, signed by the developers.
That's, that sounds perfect.
And the town also is driving. So if you wanted to say that it had to be in after the 250th CO or prior to the 250th CO, that that would be a decision that you guys could make.
Okay. I would feel a lot better about that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the sooner the better.
Yeah.
I agree, sooner the better. I just couldn't tell you specifically how it's going to lay out.
Yeah. Good. Because my concern there is you build 500 homes and you have one access, and then you, somebody goes bankrupt, and then we're stuck with 500 homes.
Yeah, if you, if you buy that- Subject product property too, you're putting everything on that one side, the other side's not going to get done, and we're going to be scratching our head going, we got, you know, we don't want to be in that position.
I think you guys are being great stewards for the town. I'm not disagreeing with you on anything you're saying. I agree. I just, you asked me, when's it going to be built? I don't know. I couldn't tell you that, because I don't know how the things are going to be built, practically speaking. Once we get 100 homes on that side, we need two points of access. Once we get 100 homes on this side, we need two points of access.
So we need to amend, we need to amend. I was going to say, so legalese, we need to amend the motion, right? But for record-keeping, I want to make sure that how it's presented, do we know, I'm just saying, do we have everything that was just talked about in that very quick, three-minute, five-minute?
If you think I could give a simple motion to the board.
I would, I would love that, because I was trying to jot down what they were saying, they were saying, everybody was saying, and I was kind of getting a little lost myself. So, yeah, if you wanted to do that and then have someone make that amended, I'd be happy with that.
So approve the petition to rezone the parcels between Fleming and Hicks, contingent upon the developer in agreeing to write in writing to all of the following conditions. One, that the intersection improvements on Hicks and Fleming are a portion of the neighborhood, that the bypass portion is completed before the certificate of occupancy for the 250th home, and all other pieces of the traffic impact analysis were done as required by NCDOT.
What was the first one? So I could have been mine. The first one is, I was right, and I had to grab a pen. Was the first part?
Yes.
I got the bypass for 250, and the TIA completed. Was the first part?
That's a long motion.
Yeah, that's all I was, okay, there you go.
You can accept it as-
Contingent upon them signing it.
Yeah.
Receiving their written commitment.
Okay. I will amend my motion to condition of receiving and writing a completion of the bypass by the 250th CO, and all TIA's completed through the DOT, and are we doing, we're doing our own now, correct as well?
All improvements required by the TIA.
Yeah, okay, just TIA. Okay, all improvements required by the TIA.
All right, we've got a amended motion. Do I hear a second on that amended motion? All right, we got a first and a second. Any additional discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Reports and other business, pretty much stated earlier, it's been a rough week. I hope everyone is safe and well, and looking forward to the Fall Festival that is coming up. And if I don't think of anything else.
Octoberville.
Octoberville, but that's after our next meeting, right?
No, it's because it's the eighth. It'll be, actually, I was, oh, okay.
We'll just call a quick recess and-
Yeah, that way, for those that want to scoot.
I'm sure pregnant here has to-
I really think I could say something.
Hello.
I just want to say, like, come on, man, that's something we are.
Yeah.
You just know, Jay.
That lady's just me.
Oh, yeah.
She's been here for very long, since she's encouraging people to do a class, actually.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Can I just say something?
You can, you can-
Go ahead and continue on with my report. So, yeah, tough week. I'm glad we're hedging towards Friday. I've got a lot of excitement about Fall Festival coming up, Octoberville. I feel like there was something else I was supposed to bring up, and now I can't remember it. But, yes, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Redd.
I just, no one's here to listen, but I am really, really sad about Griffins. I pulled my kids up there in a wagon every Saturday for so, so many years. My third kid's actually named Griffin. Some people think it's because we ate there every Saturday. I don't know. So that makes me really sad. I'm really glad no one was hurt. And Matthew Winslow is an amazing stand-up guy, and so I'm looking forward to what he does there. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you to that, Commissioner Redd. Commissioner Percy?
Um, do we have a new date for the Archer and Pratt?
The seats are kind of locked.
I don't think they've come out. They haven't released the new date yet.
I think I've seen it, yeah.
For the social, yeah, they're after hours. I know it got false. Hey, like Matt said, Benchmark Bank, there's a disaster relief fund. You can mail it to Benchmark Bank, you can go to Benchmark Bank, however you want to do it. And in October, the Downtown Merchants who started this disaster relief fund will also be hosting Octoberville on October 8th. Come in, support the local businesses in town. Could be a good time.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Percy?
That's it.
All right, Commissioner Brain?
I have a question on Octoberville. Are we supposed to do the duck tank again?
No, 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 no. Okay, all right. I mean, I'm down if I need to, but I'd-
No.
All that hot dog water, no sir. Yeah. It was bad, bro. But I know it's already been said, but just echoing everybody's thoughts about Griffins is really, you know, unfortunate to lose it, but lucky that everybody was safe. And I'm glad that Matt Winslow is the one that owns it, because I know he can do a stand-up job and will do the town proud. So I'm looking forward to our opportunities there. I feel for, you know, our existing businesses that were impacted, obviously, and as well the two new business owners that were going to invest in our town. And I hope that they can work something out to still move into town and provide us some restaurants, because outside of traffic, that's the other thing that everybody else is looking for, is we need new restaurants. So I hope we've got more coming. I've heard of some. So looking forward to ones in the future.
Outstanding. Thank you, Commissioner Brain. Commissioner Johnson?
I just want to go on record to say that we had nothing to do with the traffic for Wake Forest.
Not zero, zero.
I wanted to say that while we, while everybody was in here, but I'll just say it, well, nobody's in here. I mean, that's, that's a disaster.
You know, the most important person is still in here.
I can also-
They're not yelling at you about traffic, man. They're yelling at us about traffic. I just think that I can't understand why we were not, why we weren't, we're not involved in on that. And I understand why we're not, but I also understand why we should have been. And that has nothing to do, that's not, that's not a knock. That's just whoever approved that should have, I mean, it's going to affect us. So.
If I remember correctly, when they tried to petition Wake Forest to go in across from Jordan, we did have input, and we told them that we were not supportive of it because of the traffic impacts to the town. Then, when it got shifted over, again, still Wake Forest, but on that Franklin County, Wake County line, then it, there was no input, like, there was no, there was no input asked of us. So, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was a, a big deal.
That's all I've got.
All right. And Commissioner Wiggins?
Only one comment. Unknowingly drove into that day before yesterday with the work group. It cost us an hour.
Oof.
With, I have 11 men. So it was expensive.
Yeah, yeah, understood, understood. All right. Hey, Barbara Jones?
Public business, but I'd like to thank the staff for their help this month. We kind of dig into the municipal records of the town, and everyone is super helpful as always, and I always appreciate that collaboration.
Good deal. Thank you for that. And any updates from staff?
Yeah, Mayor Flowers, I have a few. This is my 13th month working for Youngsville, so I hope none of our months are like this in the future. If they are, I'm going to go drive a trash truck for another municipality. I have to say that there is not a member of this staff that I wasn't impressed with in some way, shape, or form this week, doing some activity that they did. And everybody went above and beyond and just continues to impress me. We were all so lucky to work for y'all, and y'all are lucky to have them working for you. It's, it's a great place to be in. I just can't speak kindly enough of what they did across the board this week. Yeah. There is the opioid settlement meeting in Lewisburg on October 3rd. I'm happy to go to that. It's still a preliminary meeting, so I don't think any elected officials need to attend. So if you're interested, you can get with me. It's from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. The maintenance improvement project, CSX finally gave them our approval. They said they were going to let us know when we could operate in the right of way, and then they just said, oh, today's the day. We went ahead and they stayed contracted and capitalized on it. And then they ran into a hard deadline of NCDOT saying, this is Memorial Day weekend, you are not allowed to work, because their scheduled time to work is Sunday nights. They would have been out there when all this stuff with Griffins happened, had it been a regular weekend. Again, another way that we got lucky.
The timing.
But they should have been patching that hole in the, in the pavement, and we shouldn't have to bore under the railroad for a while. There are some stormwater improvements in their right-of-way that will require flagging, but they're not under the railroad, as far as I'm aware. The Luddy Park project, the Partif funds, that should start the reseeding, the grading, and others on November 5th. And we matched the state grant. The total project is about $60,000. That'll help the fields, all the fields drain faster, and then they'll reseed all the fields. The Cedar Creek and Tarboro Road improvements, that we're going to straighten out Cedar Creek and connect to the Tarboro there, make Cedar Creek a right-in, right-out to try and help those left turns go to a reasonable location. The survey work has started on that, and actually, we received a scope of work from the engineers to design it yesterday. I forwarded on to Scott Wheeler to make sure that he was 100% on board with us. We don't want to do anything that makes our NCDOT partners upset, because then they'll pull the big funds. The shared use agreement for the parking lot across in Maine and the Old Town Hall, the survey in there will start next week. And then, once the survey's in hand, we'll start the design, and then we'll get a formalized agreement about what that can look like, and hopefully open up some more public parking downtown. And then lastly, I think the most important piece, Aaron and I met with the contractor for the comprehensive land use and transportation plan update. It would have been nice to be able to tell folks that that process is about to kick off. We don't have the public hearings for that yet. We don't have the workshops for that yet. But we told them that the single most important thing in Youngsville is to listen to the people that have, that are here, because their input is what makes this place great. And so we will have a lot of citizen input from that, and then members of ETJ, and then surrounding neighborhoods will contribute to that. So look for that. We'll have some pop-ups on our website, as y'all have seen in the past, and hopefully get the word out there through other means. Tens of the newspaper will run an article on it as soon as we have the dates firmed up.
If only there was a way we could get that information to them. Hmm.
Been in the news for 43 days.
This is true.
A quick, a quick two things. I'm sorry. Finished?
That's it?
Okay, quick two things. There's a big pothole at railroad at the coffee shop. If you turn it right, right there beside the-
I didn't notice, because I don't go that way, because traffic's so bad. I have to go all the way around the light.
At rescue or on main?
Right. It's, boy, it's right there on that. It's where they've-
There's a drive. Okay, thank you.
Right across, right across from their drive. You'll hit it, just drive through there. Second thing is, is the backstop at Lower Luddy, Field 2. Have we done anything about it? Have you seen it?
Yes, we are doing something about it. Alyssa's gotten, it's where the, the one kind of came.
The one came out of the, the one came out of the socket.
On the top?
Yes.
Yeah, if you call the seagulls, they'll try to get it out.
Okay, well, okay. Give them a minute after this.
Awesome. Anything else, Mr. Page, Commissioner Johnson?
No, no.
All right. There is no need to go into closed session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, do I hear a say? Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. 8:46.